Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to Monday, November 16th, council meeting. If you have a cellphone, please turn it off. We'll call this meeting into order and we'll start with a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Barnes.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Decker.
Here.
Kraus.
Here.
French.
Here.
And Mayor Domingo.
Here, thank you. Mayor's and council members comments? Are there any comments from the council this evening? Yes, Andy?
Thank you, Mayor. Lots of goings on in town. I'm sure we're going to hear an update momentarily from Jessica Thomas. I would like to say and to thank publicly all the members of the committee, the Albion Community School, Albion Community Education Committee that have been working for the last month on options available to us for our community school special. Thanks to Cheryl Mitchell, who's been serving sort of as a behind the scenes worker for us and making sure that people are communicated with. If anyone is not on the current email list to receive informational updates about the goings-on of that committee and the goings-on of the school board, please, please, please get in touch with me either by phone, (517) 414-1138, or send me an email at afrench@albian.edu and we will make sure your name is added to that list. Communication, especially during this time, is critical. It's one of the things that Albion has difficulty with, given our diversity of folks in town and their abilities to connect to information. So I again would reiterate, please, if you're interested in the local schools and what we're doing moving forward, please connect. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Yes.
I would like to ask the citizens of Albion, particularly property owners, to be involved with the committee in making recommendations by email or letter. Cities will be involved basically because if there is an annexation with any type of entity, there's still the debt that has to be passed on to the citizens of Albion. So that's where we come involved as a city, property owners who will carry the load in this situation. So please get involved. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you. We'll move on to presentations. Start out with replacement of the city welcome signs with Marie McComb.
Hi, everybody.
Hey, Marie.
Thanks of all just to talk about that. I just wanted to say and tell to let know to people that on Wednesday it's going to be a vigil at Victory Park at 7:00 at the pavilion related what happened in Paris. And related to that, I wanted to thank all the people that sent me their message. Hope and thanks God, my family and my friend are all safe. So thanks for that and for all your concern. Right now about the signs. So we, I work with the Chamber of Commerce. Unfortunately, Emmy Robinson, the president of the Chamber of Commerce, had an emergency. But we had, you have this paper where you have like two different kind of type of the signage. We agreed that we're going to work with the one on the left side because the one on the right side, there was bricks and in the design, we already have bricks. So it's to put it a little bit lighter. The sign is going to have exactly the same dimension that the one who are already available in the city. There will have three of them. The one at the Riverside Cemetery at the entrance from Homer, the one in Michigan Avenue at Gina's, and we're going to rebuild the one that was on Austin Avenue where it's Von Dyston Co. Company that just appeared. I think I say almost.
Can I stop you for a minute, Marie?
Of course. I think it's almost. Do you have question? Because I don't have anything else in mind right now. I think it's, yeah, it's going to be this one. It's going to be this one. Yeah.
So the shape of this is not square.
No, exactly. It's going to be like.
You're going to modify this a little bit.
Exactly. Exactly. To make it fit that shape.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. And this, we also got.
Exactly. This is just to let you know the quantity of price related to, related to the size and the like specific dimension of the sign.
So this is $46,000 for three signs?
Sorry?
So each one of these is $15,300?
No, 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 no. No, 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 no.
Oh, there it is.
Yeah.
I said quantity one.
This is the total amount of money for the three signs.
Okay. Great.
Yeah.
Which, I see that we've been given another photograph of the possibility of a sign. Do we have any input in which sign's used or is that somebody in chamber decides?
The size?
The sign.
The sign, I think that this is, yeah. The sign change related to some updates and some comments about the people who were there during the event. On October 24th, it was the event called Shore Your Best, where the final part was the presentation of this sign. The sign what previously agreed was a lot of people, I mean of the city hall and outside of, not outside of city. So what appeared is that after that we presented then, some people working at the city hall had some comment coming from the public or whoever it is, and so we made some updates.
Any further questions of Marie? If you look on the quote page, it tells you the signs are $4100 each. Installation is $3,000, which I'm assuming is $1,000 each. Am I correct? And the total's $15,300.
Yeah, exactly. So this is the thing, this is the thing that we might discuss after because since that we have an entity at the city hall who is able to do it, this amount of money can disappear. But I would prefer to have like the biggest amount of money and after reduce that than the contrary and after add any cost.
And you're going around collecting this?
Yeah, actually, so we're working right now with the Chamber of Commerce and the Albion Community Foundation. So we're making a fundraising. So the check or have to be made to the Albion Community Foundation with the monument welcome sign and any amount of money is welcome from us businesses or individual person.
And I notice on the quote sheet, it says price does not include electricity or electrical run. We're not lighting them up anyway.
No, exactly. In the, in the first line, you have like the four by eight non-illimitated welcome to Albion Monument sign. So yeah, exactly.
All right. Any further questions of Marie? Thank you very much, Marie.
You're welcome.
B is update on the food hub and the farmer's market from Patrick Lopez.
I apologize for not having any media to put in your hands. I promise you, it's mostly just words on paper. I was supposed to do a presentation, but I failed to secure the projector. So a real quick note of introduction for those of you that don't know me. My name is Patrick Lopez. I have recently taken over the farmer's market and food hub from Sandra Florence. I am a recent Albion grad, class of 2015. Don't let the hairline fool you. And it's a pleasure to be back working with the city. So I am here tonight to give you an update on the construction of the food hub itself. If you are not familiar with the location, it's over at 112 East Erie, two doors down from the subway, next to the old Saunders Building. So the food hub itself, I would say now is about 80% complete. Exterior is not being built up, but the inside has all of the drywall hung. The flooring is nearly complete. Excuse me, the flooring actually has just begun, but the wonderboard is down. I talked to Becky over at the Paint Spot today. She says that they're going to get the flooring actually started today. Paint is going up. We're going with a lovely white color and one of the walls inside of the marketplace will be a very nice shade of bronze. So it's, it's coming together nicely. There will be office space in there for myself. Also Albion Innovations will be occupying an office space in there as well. There is room in the back for what I'm hoping will become a winter or a year-round market so that if we have people who are growing year-round, we will provide a place for them to sell. The marketplace itself, which occupies, I believe, the actual 112 address, there will be two doors when you approach. One will show you where the kitchen is. The other actually has the marketplace itself. The marketplace should provide a place to sell year-round grown produce. Anything that is produced in the kitchen itself can be sold there as well. We're currently working on getting a system put together for the point of sale and inventory tracking. I think we have a pretty good lead on that, so that's nearing completion as well. If you go down Erie Street, you'll look and see there's a big beautiful bank of windows that takes up the front. We're currently in initial talks with somebody to get some signage put up in those windows. Right now, I am leaning toward vinyl signing, vinyl applique, which can be very bright and colorful and easy to replace should it ever get damaged. But we're also looking at the possibility of some sort of electric signage. It was pointed out to me at the last EDC board meeting that electric signage would really help light up that part of Erie Street, and I can't help but agree. But figuring out a logo and a name is still in the works. So if anybody has suggestions, please feel free to let me know. Let's see. As far as the equipment for the food hub itself, we have already got the freezer, the big walk-in freezer and the two big walk-in coolers have been purchased. They are being assembled right now. We purchased these from Northwestern Kitchen Supply and I believe they're in Grand Rapids. And they've got the ball rolling on that. And just today, we put the finishing touches on the order for the actual kitchen equipment itself, the burners, the oven, tables, things like that. All of that is coming together nicely. We went through a few rounds, making sure that all of the equipment that we ordered was, was okay with our builders and our mechanical engineers, and everything is checked out, so it's on its way. I would hope that the equipment will be here before Christmas, and I'm shooting to open sometime in the middle of January. In case anybody is wondering, there have been a number of setbacks in actually getting construction finished. I think at this point, we're eight months behind schedule, but I hope to be open right after the first of the year. Couple of other things that need to be completed. As I said, the name and the signage. We haven't designed a logo for it yet, but we are in the process of a name. I hope to have one of those firmly in hand by the middle of December. The point-of-sale systems for the storefront, something we're still looking into, but as I said, I think I've tracked down what we want to do for that. And I'm also working on developing some programming for the food hub in 2016. I am looking at some pilot programs involving community-supported agriculture, CSA programs. In particular, I would like to increase the number of SNAP or EBT dollars spent at both the farmer's market and the food hub. When we looked at the year-end numbers for the farmer's market, we only saw a little over $500 in SNAP spent at the market. It's my goal in 2016 to double that number to 1,000, which sounds conservative, but for the time being, it's, it's a good way to test out whether or not our outreach programs are going to work. Chief among that, and my sort of pet project right now is developing the CSA program where we can take payment in SNAP and then deliver our product to their doorstep. And that's something that a food hub is particularly useful for, as we can aggregate all of the product there, divvy it up into the boxes or baskets and deliver it ourselves. Let's see, last little update. I already told you that our SNAP totals for the farmer's market were $532. I'd like to see that double to 1,000. A big win for us though was Senior Project Fresh, which works sort of along the same line. You get a coupon and redeem it at the market, and then there's remnants that's done by the city. That totaled $1,100. I would like to see that go up to 1,500 if at all possible. Again, all these programs are about increasing food access, and I think that's a good first step for any kind of, you know, abatement programs as far as health or poverty here in this town. WIC Project Fresh, which is, supports mothers and their children, that was only $136. And as of today, I'm in talks with Calhoun County Public Health Department to try to set up some sort of program where we can promote synergy between our market and their programs to see some more buy-in via WIC. And last but not least, Prescriptions for Health, which is sort of a smaller program, that was, that was fairly small, only about $20 sold. So 2016, I'm looking to try to double most of those numbers. I think that the food hub will give us access all throughout the week and hopefully all throughout the year to locally grown and produced products. And once we can start getting the ball rolling on some, some vendors and some growers to stock us, I think we're going to see some big successes. So.
Sounds good. Question?
Have you, in addition to a CSA model, have you thought about the possibility of a, of a cooperative program, people?
Well, I'm thinking of the CSA model in terms of the near future. And like I said, these are pilot programs, but yes, hopefully we could scale up to a co-op at some point. I would love to see a full-fledged co-op in downtown Albion. I think that that would go a long way toward increasing food access. We're, we're considered by the USDA and other development agencies to be an honest God food desert, and I think that anything we can do to increase that kind of access in downtown. And as a resident of downtown, I would love to be able to walk two blocks to the store. So some of the things that I have discussed, and these are pie in the sky ideas, but I would like to get in touch with Family Fair and see about perhaps selling some of their product through the marketplace. Obviously, we don't want to edge out any of their business, but if we can come up with a cooperative deal, I think to increase just sort of general access in the downtown area, it's, it's a win for everybody.
Thank you, Patrick.
Want to explain a little bit about the kitchen? How that works?
So the kitchen is a full-fledged commercial kitchen. It is not too dissimilar from what you'd see in a restaurant. What we are hoping there is that because the kitchen is run by people who are licensed as food managers, myself and Peggy, if all else fails, can go in there, I suppose. I wouldn't ask you to do that. The idea is that anybody who's interested in beginning a food business can do so without the immense overhead of building their own kitchen or renting their own facility. So the idea is that for an established rate, which we're still working on, you would come in, rent the kitchen for a block of time, produce your product, and as long as you are licensed, as long as you've been tested by the state, and we intend to demystify that process for anybody interested, you're able to sell your product. And you can sell it through the storefront. You're not bound by the cottage food laws, which require you to sell face-to-face. So you could sell at stores, sell hopefully at our marketplace. It's a great way, it's a great way to remove the barriers to entry for people that are interested in the food business. And I am praying that somebody wants to open a bakery because I think donuts would sell great in this town. I would buy most of them. So the idea is hopefully people will be able to, you know, it would abate some of that, and I looked at the startup cost for most restaurants, somewhere in the neighborhood of $300,000. You don't have to pay any of that overhead. You can get a feel for how your business works, how your products are received, and whether or not you really want to make the time commitment to that kind of business. And so I think that the kitchen is going to be a big, big help in people looking to make that first step into the food business.
So opening day, we're going to have what? A French chef in there to?
So I'm actually, I'm open to ideas for opening ceremonies. I would be, sure.
I'm available.
Dr. French, if you are interested. We have an opening.
Well, I cook. That makes me a French chef, right?
Anyhow, no, we are, we are currently, thank you, Andy. We're, we're drumming up some ideas for sort of a grand opening celebration, but I foresee the kitchen being used for a number of things. It can be rented out for community events, it can be rented out for cooking classes. One of my big interests in partnering with the county health agency is to promote cooking classes for WIC users and for SNAP users. I especially like the idea of promoting, I hate this word, but promoting synergies between what is sold at the farmer's market and classes that are offered at the food hub. So if we're selling three products very well, I want to turn around and be able to teach people how to cook with them. It does everything that we're looking for. It promotes low-cost food access for the community, and it's more money in my, my vendors' pockets, so that's what we're hoping to see.
Cool. Good. Any further questions of Patrick? Thank you very much. We appreciate it. C, the residential side lot program has been canceled. We need to table that till next month.
So moved.
Moved and supported. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Table till next month. I don't know what date. D, Albion Community School update by Jessica Thomas.
Good evening, everyone. I want to thank each of you for giving me the opportunity to speak with all of you today. I, just to give a backdrop for people that don't know me, I was born and raised in Albion, graduated from Albion High School, went on to Albion College, and then went into governmental audit and accounting. I've worked with the city in some capacity over the past couple of years. And the past, I would say, four to five years of my career has been focused on assisting distressed school districts and municipalities throughout our great state of Michigan. One of the reasons that I'm here today is in my professional career, in my professional network around the state, I've heard quite a bit about Albion, Albion Public Schools, which was quite disheartening in some regard because it wasn't all great news. So I just did my digging and just said, well, what's going on? I came down at the community to a forum about a month or two ago that the Albion College put on, and, you know, I learned that we had some serious issues that we were being faced with as a community. I had talked to a couple of people in the community, and a lot of people just wanted information. You know, hey, what, what, what can we expect? What does this look like? And I was, you know, quite happy to be able to offer up my services. Obviously, I have a vested interest in the success of the community. I have a nephew that goes to school in Marshall. I have a niece and a nephew that goes to school in Albion. And I also have a nephew that decided to go to Jackson School. So, you know, you talk about vested. But one of the reasons why I'm here today is to really give an update on the state of the schools. I, I think that there's been a lot of rhetoric and conversations about it. I think at this point right now, the deficit is approximately 2 million, and they are still sorting through what that deficit is. Furthermore, they were originally or now expected to report under Department of Treasury. And the backdrop to that is, is that typically you look at it, is it an academic issue or is it a finance issue? And what you find over time is that the finances are the, the final authority in so many words. So now Department of Treasury is in the district, looking at the finances to get a better understanding and/or level of comfort with the state of the finances of the district. I think that there's been quite a, quite a few conversations on the financial position, but I believe that that is being handled by Treasury, and I believe that they will have a position or issue some sort of information to the district over the course of the next week and a half or so. What's happening now within the Citizens Committee is there's been a lot of talk about annexation. I think everyone's aware of the conversations around annexation with Marshall Public Schools. And I believe that those talks are still progressing, and the Citizens Committee is making a recommendation or whatnot to the board, just to voice their opinion and/or give some input to this entire process. The Citizens Committee is made up of several individuals in the community. They have actually asked and/or recommended to the board that they engage me to help pull information and present information in a way that everyone can understand. And so when we talk about the annexation, there was a lot of talk, is what does that mean? What are the implications? Lots of questions. So the Citizens Committee has been asking quite a few good questions, but they are complicated questions. I will say that. And one of the things that has come up is how do you manage the debt when a district is annexed? And that's been a hot topic of conversation. And not getting into all of the details and boring everyone, at the end of the day, the debt will stay with the district unless there's some, some other infusion of cash to manage the debt. So at this point, I believe that there are conversations on how that debt can be managed. And I'm encouraging, you know, the city and everyone to pay attention, as was stated earlier by council, councilperson Maurice Barnes, in part because there are broad implications of what this means for the community. I think that in most situations, when I look at City of Detroit and Detroit Public Schools, I look at Benton Harbor and the City of Benton Harbor, Saginaw Public Schools and, and the City of Saginaw, Flint, City of Flint. When you have distress in these communities, it's not just a school issue, it's a community issue. And there are implications that are far beyond what we see on paper or what we hear in the newspapers. So I'm just challenging everyone to ask the questions, get the information, so that our community can be positioned to look forward in what we will look like from here on. And there's another thing that I wanted to definitely address. There has, there's been a lot of talk about the school closing in January. In short, how it works is cash flow. I think we all understand. Cash flow statement is that which, how much money do you have to keep the doors open and pay all of your bills and pay your teachers and all of that fun stuff? Because again, I mentioned that the financial status and/or position of the district has not been clearly identified, that cash flow statement is in the works, but there's been a lot of talk that that date would be January. So of course, everyone's response is, are the schools going to close in January? Even with all of the districts that have dissolved, which is two at this point, Inkster and also Buena Vista, the state has made sure that the doors would stay open for the remainder of the school year. And I can't say, because I, I'm not Treasury, but I can say that it's not their intent to disrupt the lives of so many children, you know, 457 children, I think, is the number. That's not their intent, and I have not seen that done to date. So that's all that I have. If there are any questions, I'd be very glad to answer.
I have four questions, and I know you don't want to really go into the elements, but I want to ask these just because I am a councilman. My first question is, if the debt was hypothetically speaking, $15 million, that would fall back on the citizens' value?
Correct. And how that typically works is the bonded debt is taken care of because there's already a millage that is out there that's taking care of that. And I think if everyone understands proposal A, put a cap on how much money or how many mills you could levy, and, and we are at that. So, you know, the question becomes is how will the existing debt or the new debt be handled? And yes, that would typically, yes, it will fall unto the citizens.
Even the bonded?
The unbonded. Yes.
Now, my second question is the Albion District Library. They're a tax recipient of the school district. How is this going to affect the library as a district? Because the body of the district is ourselves, shared in township, Albion Township, if the school would leave?
I think that at this point, and I want to respect those at the library, I believe that they are going through a process to issue some sort of opinion and/or letter to reference that. And I believe that they're working through that, and I'm assuming that they should have something for everyone because they're consulting with their attorneys as well.
Okay. Now, my third question is, to keep our school open, wouldn't that Treasury take a look at if we can keep the buses rolling, if we can make payroll, and if we can keep the utilities going? Would that be the earmark to keep the school open?
Yes, and that would be, in so many words, a short-term loan to finish out the school year.
Okay. You seem to be cringing at the loan. Now, my final question is.
But there could, there, there might be hope. There may be some hope there, but, you know, on how to manage the debt, but yes.
Remember now, this is strictly for the public.
Yes, understood. Completely understood.
Now, how can the Albion Community School debt be shared through the process? Say through the annexation, consolidation, or collaboration?
Yes.
Would these other entities pick up, help us pick up the debt? And also, my final statement is, only the District of Albion Schools will get the vote on that annexation?
That is correct, that it will be voted on by the citizens. And I believe that the debt, again, and I think that everyone should call their attorneys and consult because I'm sure there's so many nuances, you know, associated with this, and I'm not an attorney. But as I understand, under the school code, there is a portion of the debt that would be shared with Marshall, but that's the, a part that's already taken care of by the citizens of Albion.
But it's not a clear and done deal that we are going to annex Marshall, who still got the hills, I mean, sorry, Homer and Concord?
I think that that is something that, that is a question that is still open at this point as to who we're talking to, whether it's Marshall or more districts. So that I think that's still open, and that may be something that the district would have to, I guess, say something about.
And finally, I do miss you, Michigan Municipal League.
You know, it's so interesting, and again, I want to thank everyone because I'm looking at our community and just to hear, you know, Patrick's presentation and hear all the positive things that are happening, you know, as, as someone whose heart is still here, I just want to continue to see the progress in who we are, you know, continue to see the progress downtown. All of those things are important, and again, we're not just a school district, we are community. And everything, every decision that is made today, whether it's at the schools or here at the city council, it affects everyone. And I just challenge everyone to be a part of the process, as, as it's been stated today by Dr. French and also Mr. Barnes here, because these are serious conversations. And I think that it's valid to ask questions. When you're making moves like this, everyone should be able to ask a question. And I think everyone's entitled to some answer because this is not just something that we will make a decision on quickly without asking the questions.
Is there a difference in the debt if we annex or don't annex?
Is there a difference in the debt if we annex or don't annex?
The debt is the debt. You know, you're right, the debt is the debt, it will not go away.
Would it be possibly less if we don't annex than it would be if we did?
No chance.
I don't think so.
No chance.
In fact, it's the opposite.
The question- Okay. Well, the thing, I guess my question is, there's so many rumors going out there about how many millions of dollars and everything else. We're not being perfectly clear-
Right.
-with all of the citizens and everything else. We've got an awful lot of rumors and everything else.
Agreed.
The only thing I do know, if we lose our schools, it'll be devastating to Albion, Michigan.
Yeah.
Whether you annex or you don't annex or whatever, we lose that school, you've almost lost Albion. So think real hard about sending our kids someplace else. Yes.
So, two comments regarding those concerns. In the proposal that Marshall is building to annex Albion Schools, their plan requires that there be a building, and this will be negotiable with our school district, their plan calls for an elementary school to remain in Albion. They don't have seats in Marshall to house our students. So that's the, that would be their proposal. From what I heard at previous meetings with regard to the debt, us doing nothing creates more financial burdens than if we do something. So if we just dissolve, if we don't pass whatever plan is recommended by the school board, if we do nothing but dissolve, then our debt will be more than if we do something, if we take some action. So I think that the options of whether we, whether any of the options that are available that we will learn about this week, thanks to Ms. Thomas's efforts, all of those options are better than us just doing nothing. Because if we do nothing, we will be dissolved, we will be divided, and the debt will be more. Because the state's not interested in us doing nothing, they want us to take action, and there might be reward structures in place for us to take action.
Garrett?
I know a number of the people up here actually are on the committee, and, but following up on your question, the thing that I was curious about, so that, you know, the debt's the debt, but in terms of the time we have to pay it, did that change depending on how we, how we, you know, if we, if we say, okay, we're just going to take a loan and hope that this goes through and on the March or May election versus actually doing something now and negotiating with the state? Because I know there are other communities, I think you mentioned on the presentation, the City of, or the-
Pontiac Schools.
And Benton Harbor.
Yeah.
Where they had very quick turnaround time for paying these emergency loans off. So I think it might not change the amount of debt, but it might change how quickly some of the loans have to be paid back.
Yes.
And I think that's kind of what the committee was responding to on Thursday. So.
Yes. Piggybacking off of Councilman French's statement, is that a true statement if we don't annex, the debt will be worse? Wouldn't the debt be the same? For example, how close is my hypothetical guess of 14 million dollars aggregate? Aggregate means the total of all the debt these citizens will be responsible for?
And this is a part that I think where a lot of the confusion has come. So I'll be quite frank, and I'll go back to the beginning of the presentation. The state of the Finance and Accounting Department has been, they can't, they don't have an answer. And so Treasury is the entity that's coming in to say, okay, let's get a better understanding of the debt, let's get a better understanding of all of these fun things. So I think, just for the sake of argument, let's say that the debt is 5 million or 20 million. At this point, we just don't know because of the state of the finances and the inability to produce an accurate number.
I would add that the amount of debt is far closer to the five or four than it is to the 14 or 20. So we have bonded debt that we've been paying since 2007.
And it'll be paid off in 2021.
It will be paid off in 2021. That doesn't change, that's covered. If we look at the amount of debt that we have that people are reporting as preliminary, it's between 1.8 and 2-point something.
That's the deficit.
That's the deficit. And the debt is somewhere in that figure. So the reality is, is that that new debt, whatever we incurred debt-wise for this current year, whether we have to borrow something in January, plus whatever we were indebted to last year, that's the number that Treasury is going to give us on Friday. And so that's the new debt, and that's the debt that we would be responsible for. So.
I have to ask this. In the unbonded debt, 14, 14, 5?
Nowhere near.
Yeah, unbonded, I think, was 2.9, or no, 3.5, I think is what roughly, or the bonded debt was around 3.5. The unbonded is a portion that we are still trying to get information on.
Okay, so the current debt is 2 million, the short-term debt is 2.5, the long-term is 3.9, right?
Correct.
And does that include the unbonded?
No.
No.
Okay, thank you.
You know- When might a decision come whether we go under an emergency manager or not?
I think that once Treasury comes in on Friday or, you know, later this week, I believe that they are a lot closer to figuring out how they're going to handle it. As I understand it, you know, new updates, is that I'm finding that there are other conversations being had to see how we can approach the debt. So I think that, again, unfortunately, I like to present things as risk, items for consideration, because there's so many moving parts to this current situation. I mean, there are developments every day because there's so many people working hard behind the scenes, you know, in the public, not in the public, you know, it, there's so many things being done, it's so move, it's fluid right now, very fluid.
Yes, Becky?
Would an emergency, and I know you said it wouldn't happen, but would an emergency manager enable the school to stay open?
It would more of, and I, it's hard to say that or to answer that question directly, in part because I think if you read the newspapers to see how things are managed in other districts, you know, they've, once an emergency manager is there, they're there for some time. The thing I can say is that it could potentially, I don't want to say delay it, but it can give everyone a little bit more time possibly to sort through some of these things.
Well, the reason I ask is I read an article, I think it was about a week ago, that Detroit actually received assistance from the state in staying open. Is that something that Albion would be able to look into?
You know, I think at this point, potentially. But then there's another side where, you know, again, legislators, calling legislators, you know, getting on the phone, making sure that the different positions are heard. The state, as I understand it, in my experience and what I see, is they're here to support. They're putting a lot of the responsibility on the local unit to say, this is what we're going to do. They prefer you to be proactive to the problems. However, when, in the event that a local unit cannot help or change the situation, you see different options. Emergency manager is one of three options, or one of four options. One is emergency manager, and that's where it's a complete quote-unquote state takeover. There's a consent agreement, which there is still some local control, but then there's a little bit of oversight. There's the neutralization process, which I have not seen done, but that's more of, okay, we're going to work through this on our own. And then the last is bankruptcy. I believe that the options available right now, just because of the climate, it's probably, it wouldn't be an emergency manager, it might be something like a consent agreement. I mean, that's probably realistic, I should say, because in part because it will still allow the district to make decisions on their own and kind of work their way through things.
But if the school district, and forgive me because I really don't know, and I just want to get some information, wouldn't it actually be better for the city to have an emergency manager come in and allow, and take over? And that way, keep the school open? Because I don't see how, if we allow the school to close, we're going to reopen in a year or two, I really don't.
Right. And I think that that's the varying opinion throughout the community. And I think that people are still navigating what the best option is. But I think at this point, now that Treasury is actually in the door, I think that that's something that we don't even have to worry about anymore, because Treasury is going to make a decision as to how they want to approach Albion.
Would they be the ones to determine then?
Correct.
It would be their decision, not the school board?
Correct.
Okay.
Garrett?
You know, and I'm glad that you're here, and I'm glad we're having this conversation because, you know, as I've gone to these different meetings and heard different things, I know that the district, I guess the community in general has had issues throughout the years, you know, dealing with economic hardship. But, you know, it's become more and more apparent to me that that's not an isolated decision, it's not an isolated impact. You know, this is going to, I mean, really, the kids are the lifeblood of the community, right? And so if that's not sustainable, because, you know, I do hear, several people have mentioned that, you know, Marshall, their elementaries are full, but again, they're not immune from, you know, decline in enrollment. I think that, like you talked about on Thursday, and I mentioned too at the meeting, is that, you know, Michigan was the only state in the last census to have a loss in population.
Correct.
And so, and then there was a gentleman a couple of years ago, before they made the decision to close a high school, I think a faculty member from MSU, who did, kind of showed the stats, right? So county counties getting older, there's less, a lower birth rate. So those are issues. And then Marshall itself is facing competition because there's other districts around. So, you know, my concern is that, and I'm glad these questions are being raised, is that any quick decision is not a really good decision because we really need to think about the impact. Because like I said, once it's done, it's hard to do it. And I had thought about that, because actually the committee voted to make a recommendation to, you know, declare an emergency on Thursday for that very reason, to have us, to enable the community to kind of negotiate what that emergency loan looks like from the state and to give us some time. Because I know that, and I know we're going to, I don't want to keep talking, but I know we're going to discuss it more at council here, but this is a really an important issue for the entire community. And so I think, I hope that we can find some way, working with you, working with the committee, to kind of get this information out. Because you do hear rumors, I've heard that rumor about all the schools closing. So, you know, I just really want us to take that seriously. And also, I don't know who mentioned it, but we do need to talk to our elected officials at the state level, because I know they're already being talked to, but to let them know our concern. Because like you said, I mean, if the schools fail, that's residents with children who are not moving here, that's people, you know, those, and those are tax dollars eventually to us. So it can spill over, so thank you.
And I would agree. One of the things that, just, I'm speaking actually tomorrow at the School Improvement Conference, which is for all of the superintendents in the state, and I'm speaking on financial distress. And there was a point in my slide where I really wanted everyone to understand the state of Michigan's schools as a whole. I think, as you all understand, school districts and municipalities, a healthy fund balance is around 15 to 20 percent. And with Albion being in a deficit, obviously that's negative. And the early warning legislation is roughly around 5 percent. So in so many words, after you get to a fund balance of 5 percent, you know, you are literally spiraling in a certain, you're trending, I'll say that, you're trending. And I think the number is, is after you get to a fund balance of 10 percent, you're borrowing every day just to cover your operational cost. You know, you talk about the enrollment as a state. We have declined in pupil membership across the state by 11 percent over the past 10 years. So not only are we seeing the impact at the K through 12 level, we're also seeing it at the higher ed, because there's still children that have to go through that system. The reason why we're talking about the student enrollment is because the calculation and the money that every school district receives is directly tied to how many students are in the district. So when you have a decline in enrollment, that has a direct impact on the amount of money that you will receive.
Yes.
I would be remiss not to ask this question. To, we talked about the school closing in January, et cetera. To maintain the school throughout the final year, do you think the Treasury may say we needed an unbonded debt, an emergency loan for about $4 million to finish the year out?
Yeah, that, I mean, that's the reality. So we have to finish out the school year. In so many words, yes, that has to happen.
And who would be responsible for that unbonded debt?
It will be the citizens of the community.
Thank you.
Primarily, it would be, in how this is handled, Pontiac Schools is a great one to look at right now, their experience and situation where they have a millage, a non-homestead millage that has to pass to cover the debt of the schools. So that's a great example of what's happening, even in their community, and what we're finding, and I'll say this, and I'll be quite clear and frank in this, is everyone is trying to figure this out. I mean, there, you have to realize, the state of Michigan is trying to figure it out, auditors are trying to figure it out, consultants are trying to figure it out because it's nimble. You have legislation being passed right now as we speak, you know, to figure out how to address the distressed school districts in our state. So that, again, adds to some of the changes where what I'm saying today may not have been the case a year ago. You know, most of the legislation has come out in the past, you know, a year or so.
So we're very unsure where we're sitting right now.
I know.
And all of the rumors that are going around with all these millions and everything else are unsure.
Yes.
I don't know where they're coming up with these numbers, but, you know, it's all rumor. So until Friday, when the Treasury Department comes with the figures, we'll know at that point.
Right.
After that point on Friday, where do we continue?
Right. And I think that's, let's say, in a week or so, because it might not be Friday, but I think that, again, they will have something sooner than later.
Okay. And so we're good this school year?
Yes.
It will be made up out of the state treasure. So we're good till June.
You may have to take a loan out.
No, we will. We will have to take a loan out.
This will all be brought to the citizens.
Right.
Or that adds.
Right.
Okay?
Not the loan.
And then what we have to figure out is not how we only keep them open till June, but how we're going to sustain that from that point on. Am I correct?
I would say yes. And that may look different. And I think, I think what I've learned in my experience is that everyone has to take a step back and reimagine what the schools will look like. Because what we've known is Albion Public Schools, I, it's hard to imagine that it will be that, but the question is, is what will it look like? And I think that some of the conversations that are being made, everyone's just trying to pull in, figure out what those options are, which is quite difficult to do at this time because there's a moving target. As you all understand, no business decision is made without understanding the money. And until we have a better position on the money, there aren't many conversations that can be had on options. Because I would never go into a business deal not understanding where, what the financial position is. And I think that most people that are invested in any of this, they will have to understand the finances before any decision is made.
Okay. So everything that we're hearing is not all fact?
Correct.
Okay. So until we get the bottom figures from the Treasury Department and everything else is one, we'll get the final deci, well, not the final decision, but-
But we'll know the debt.
...the decision's going to be, but we can go from there. Okay. So we can virtually say that probably about 80 percent of everything we're hearing is not true at this point.
Yes, moving target.
We can stop, you know, the rumors. Jessica, I want to thank you very much. You've done a very, very good job. Let's pray for the best.
Yes.
Let's hope for the best, and we got to keep our schools here, so.
And I want to thank each of you for your support. This is a very difficult position that I'm in, extremely difficult. And at the end of the day, continue to pray for me, because it is, it's a very difficult position, especially being from the community. You know, I see it as a little baby that's about to run out in the road, and I'm like, wait a minute, stop, 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 you know, let's talk about this stuff. Because at the end of the day, I think it's valid to ask questions, and I think that you're always empowered by the information that you hold. So thank you again for your time, and again, this is about the kids and educating our children. And, you know, that's, that alone should be something that everyone's thinking about.
And, yeah, thank you again.
Thank you.
Citizens' comments. Persons addressing the City Council shall limit their comments to agenda items only and to no more than five minutes. Proper decor is required. Are there any comments on the agenda? See none. We will move into the consent calendar. We'll do both of them. Approval of regular session minutes from November 2nd and approval of the budget study session minutes from November 9th.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. They pass. Okay, items for individual discussion. A, request approval of Resolution 2015-28 to approve the replacement of- of city welcome signs.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Are there further questions other than what Marie said? Yes.
So there'll be a new one at Austin and State, you see Austin on here, or whatever the sign.
Yes. That's one of the, well, it won't be Austin and State, it's Al.
Low five.
Okay, thank you. It's the one that's not there now, I do believe, was destroyed.
It's by the.
There's three signs complete, one at the cemetery, one at Austin, and one at June.
Austin is by that fertilizer company.
Correct. It's just past that.
Band East, right, thanks.
Right across from Silvers. Yes.
Where's the money coming from? We're gonna fundraise it?
Yes.
And we'll wait until the fundraising is in before we do it?
Yep.
Mayor and council, if I might, the chamber is taking the initiative relative to the replacement of the signs, and they are engaging in a fundraising effort. So they are getting sponsors and donors from businesses as well as some of the civic organizations, and they are anticipating having some kind of recognition like their logo as part of the stand portion of the sign. And what you have been presented are really more conceptual than the final sign, because if you even look at the format of the sign, there's going to have to be some modifications to that. So what you're really doing is giving approval to using the name, City of Albion, as part of the sign and the location of the signs when it's on the East Mansfield City property. So that's really the action before you. Also, I do want to mention that if you could make a modification to the actual resolution, Amy did mention that she preferred that their official name be utilized wherever it says Albion Chamber of Commerce that it actually says the Greater Albion Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Bureau, wherever it appears in the resolution.
And I just want to add something, is that to build the sign, we have to wait that we have fifty percent of the money to actually sign the contract. And I mentor people in charge of this contract at Jensen Design Company, and we're gonna sign, the contract is gonna be available for the next year. So even if we have the money in January, March, or wherever it will be in this one year, the price is gonna be the same.
Okay. So it's locked in. Yes, Marie?
The lions in the rotary, I went to them as a member and talked about this. Is that, are you planning on getting the money from them also because they want to have their logo out there, and we had to get permission through the border enforcement town? Anything? Yeah, we had to, you were gonna define the land that we could use. All right, I think we're on the same page?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. There's no further questions. Thank you, Marie. Thank you, city manager. No further questions, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Reed.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Decker.
Yes.
Kraus.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Mayor Domingo.
Yes, thank you. He requests approval of assessment of the easement for the Oakland Hospital.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Cheryl?
Mayor and council, if you recall, Oakland Hospital is building their dialysis center, and as part of that, they needed to also have the sanitary sewer and water lines to connect to their property. And this resolution approves the assignment of the easement to the city for the maintenance of their easement.
Yes.
So is that easement the path that goes from the dialysis center all the way past the soccer field to Watson Street?
Yes.
Thank you.
Which we, we already have the sewer in, am I correct? Excuse, I'll rephrase that. We already have the sewer in?
Yes.
Thank you. Are there any further questions? If not, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Decker.
Yes.
Kraus.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Reed. Mayor Domingo.
Yes. Request approval for resolution twenty fifteen dash twenty-six poverty exemption guidelines?
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Questions? It's the same thing we go to every year, a little different this time, I think, with the packet.
Yes, we're actually formalizing it as a resolution. You've already, each year you've had the standards in place, and they've been properly posted, and they've been utilized by the board of review for their evaluations of applications for the poverty exemption. So this is actually having a resolution in place that's basically saying that our standards will be aligned with the federal guidelines that are adopted each year, and then identifying what the asset test is in order to meet those exemptions.
Sweet.
So this is formalizing what you already do.
Correct. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Decker.
Yes.
Kraus.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo.
Yes. Page two of a very long agenda. Request approval of resolution twenty fifteen dash twenty-seven, increase solid millage waste, solid waste millage of one mill to make a full three mills.
So moved.
Moved and supported. Cheryl?
Okay. And I may have to call on our attorney to help out a little bit, but basically, according to the state statute, we are allowed up to three mills relative to solid waste and trash collection. Our current millage rate is at two mills, and as you know, our solid waste fund is disappearing very rapidly. So this was an opportunity to at least try to get us an operational basis for the next coming year, so to our state allow three mills.
Questions? Yes.
So approximately how much money do we expect to make from this one-mill increase?
If you look on my summary memo, it's towards the back of your packet. And the increase will generate an estimated ninety-one thousand nine hundred, that's before the capture for DDA and TFA districts.
So I guess we're not planning on it having.
But you can also see from two thousand and thirteen, the solid waste millage was generating a hundred and eighty-nine thousand in two thousand and thirteen, and by two thousand and sixteen, without the increase, it's only estimated to generate a hundred and forty-eight thousand.
Okay.
And we're anticipating.
Do we have any projects in mind as we build up that fund balance?
Really trying to maintain my current operations, we'll still need to look at some cost efficiencies such as a single hall or something along that, we have to do something differently because it's still going to continue to deplete even with the increase.
Right.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Will we be, I guess, prepared to maybe potentially go out to bids early next year?
Yes. Yeah, we're working on those now.
Okay.
No further questions, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Kraus.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Reed. Brown.
Yes.
Decker.
Yes.
Mayor Domingo.
Yes, thank you. The discussion of Austin Avenue and.
I asked for this item. I want to thank John Tracy and Mr. Lindsay, they've been doing a great job. However, I have a situation where I would ask that we still go up and do a couple of abatements. A cousin's wife is in the audience, so I can't tell that he's the one causing the problem, but it is him. John knows him by name, so we're not gonna say his name, but I'm asking John to go up and take a look at the two buildings on the end and perform an inspection. But the Austin Ave is looking great. Thank you.
That's it?
That's it.
All right. Discussion on number F, we don't have to do, am I correct, or do?
Well, I guess this will send response again to a question from Councilmember Barnes in regards to the recent demolitions that we had.
Okay, if we're gonna talk about, we probably ought to read what we're talking about.
Okay.
Request approval of, discussion and purchase of a vacant land from grant-funded property demolitions.
Yes.
Okay, Cheryl.
The land bank has indicated that those side lots will be available through their side lot program. It has to wait until the grant has actually closed out, but they're anticipating probably early fall of next year for those, the most recent demolitions, that they'll be available to purchase through their program, which is usually two hundred dollars or so for a lot.
Yes.
How are we doing on demolitions? Have they finished them?
December thirty-first.
Not yet. I believe some are going to have to carry over to next year. Are they gonna get them all done? I didn't think so.
Last, last we're talking, I was still trying to look at December thirty-first to finish up on them. So we've got a number of them down right now. I can't tell you the exact number, but they've been still moving along on them, so.
We're doing about twenty-one buildings, right?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, okay.
Okay, thanks, John.
Okay. All right. G, request approval to purchase a twenty-fourteen Chevy Express thirty-five hundred passenger vehicle priced at twenty-six thousand one hundred and seventy-five for Recreation Department. Cheryl has a question about what she wants to do here.
Yes. Well, a couple of things have come to light. One included was to get more than one price quote, which didn't necessarily happen since College Chevrolet was very kind to make available a particular vehicle to us. So what I would request is that you authorize the purchase of up to that amount for a vehicle, for van vehicle for the Recreation Department, to at least allow me to get the additional quotes, to make sure that it's competitive. We'll never walk above that amount, obviously. Just only follow the process.
So, so you're asking us to approve the purchase of a van? You will come back with three quotes that we will then make a decision on, or you will have made a decision, or someone in the Rec Department will have made a decision, and we will come back for a vote to approve that purchase?
That will be, that will be equal or less than this price.
That would be equal or less than this, right.
Well, I was hoping to skip a step, since we already have two quotes, I really didn't have three. So anticipating.
What was the other quote? Got a College Chevrolet and?
Right, I didn't submit that one, but we're looking at another vehicle, if you recall on the last meeting.
Oh, right, the one that didn't start.
Right. Yeah.
So not really.
Had some minor problems, so.
Okay. And we do have the funds, is this coming from some of the money that was raised over the basketball?
We're looking at the financing, so we're also getting quotes on the financing as well.
Thank you.
Cool.
My recommendation to council is don't forget, our charter says, anything over five thousand dollars must go off a bid.
Right.
So be careful how you approve this money before you have three bids in front of you.
I don't understand what you mean by that, Cheryl. I mean, if she's getting bids, that's following the charter.
She already has two. She has to get another one. Am I correct?
Yes.
What she's asking for is that we approve this amount and not to exceed that amount. That's what she's asking.
Still be following the charter.
But you, well.
The third bid will come under this.
Kind.
The third bid will come under this price, that's all. We'll get another bid.
Colin, are you reading it by any chance?
Yeah. Give me a minute here, I'll have an answer for you.
While he has a minute, I'd like to welcome all of you from Albion College. Thank you very much for coming to our council meeting.
Yeah, but not, I don't think that's gonna be it.
We'll just get a third bid, it'll be less than what we approve.
Yeah, but I.
Because of the charter.
Yeah, but I think, yeah, I mean, what I'm saying is, what, technically what we're doing is we're setting, setting the price for what the bids would have to be under.
Right.
So it's, 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 it's really just like a requirement for the bid.
We got time to get it. If we're not gonna spend it, well, then that's either way it goes. We're just following the letter.
At least what I'm reading here, purchases and bids generally, the purchasing agent, which would be the city manager, has the power to authorize anything under five thousand. Anything over five thousand shall be, shall be purchased by a written purchase order or contract as authorized by the city council after due notice inviting proposals given by the city as provided in the vision, so. We award all contracts on budget costs five thousand after receiving a recommendation from the city manager. It's not a contract, so I mean, it's not entirely clear. I think, I think as long as, as long as the manager seeks bids, not like sealed bids or anything, but seeks bids and makes a recommendation to council, and council approves it, it should be within the letter of the charter.
Okay.
So without having that third bid, we really should probably wait until we get that third bid?
No.
No.
But what I was saying is, is, if I understand correctly, she's asking us really to set a criteria.
Right.
For the bid, right? So it's like, okay, what price can you get me at this or under? So if I say, okay, I want to purchase, we're basically just setting a criteria for what she goes out and asks for. So it's, it's, am I, am I interpreting that right?
I see that as.
Which is fine, the problem is, and I don't want to stop from getting the van, please, okay? But she also has to go out and find the financing to pay for it. Okay? Now, are we putting the cart before the horse here? We, we, we need the three bids, which will come in at whatever, okay? Then we have to go find the financing to pay for it.
Right.
So how can you approve twenty-six thousand dollars if we don't have where we're gonna get it?
Well, what you're saying is that, so right now, we have two right now. So if we go out and got a third, it would have to be at that price or lower. But let's say someone's, I'm gonna, says they're gonna sell it for twenty-three.
I don't have a problem with that. If you want to say.
I could offer a suggestion.
Yes.
Instead of making this more cumbersome than it already is, and I hate delaying it because Chevy has been more than patient with us thus far, I was trying to avoid having to wait another two weeks until our next meeting. Why don't I bring it back when I have all of the details, including the financing and the best comparable price for a vehicle? And just bring it all together in one package for you to vote on.
Okay. Yes.
I move that we table this request, this, until the next council meeting, when we can get more information. So moved. I don't know if that needs a second or not. Yes.
Yes, some, our support.
Okay. Been moved and supported? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same? Thank you. Okay. Request to approve the sale of the nineteen ninety-nine recreation van?
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Questions?
How much are we looking to get for?
How much you willing to pay?
Five hundred?
The problem I have with doing this with this van, the reason we're not keeping it The problem I have with doing this with this van, the reason we're not keeping it is because it's dangerous to put on the road.
Correct. Well, it requires repairs that exceed the cost of the vehicle, the value of the vehicle.
Okay.
It just doesn't make sense to keep putting more money into it.
Exactly, I agree with that, but how are we going to sell it?
We're, we're looking either at the trade-in if they achieve the highest value, which I anticipate probably won't, or to go to auction.
But I hope when it does, we get relieved of all responsibility that, you know, it's, it's dangerous, that's why we are not driving it. Okay.
What's the value of the vehicle right now?
What?
I don't recall the...
Value of the vehicle?
It was only like one, two, three thousand, it wasn't a lot.
Ooh, that's too much.
Almost salvage value.
Okay.
I think in our seller's agreement, we would basically indicate that this is a vehicle that requires maintenance for it to be able to be driven on the road.
That's fine, as long as we don't, we don't have any responsibility...
Right, right.
After we let it go.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay?
Purchase as is.
I agree. So, if there's no more questions, I'm sorry Eric. Please.
Yeah, thank you. Art Cullen, I'm representing Kyle Chevrolet here tonight. I don't, if the $1,000 that's in front of you is based on our trade-in value, then I think you ought to be tabling that too, to decide what you're going to do with, if, if that's what the value is based, because we basically did that, I mean, we don't want it. We're doing it as, as part of our service to the community.
This is, this is just to give the permission to sell it.
Okay, I just, and that's fine, I just didn't, I didn't want anyone to feel that we are obligated to buy it for the $1,000 price.
Right, no, 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 no.
Okay, all right.
Okay, thank you very much. Did you need any more from him? I'm sorry, okay. So that's all we're doing. Roll call vote, if there's no more questions.
Councilmember Reed? Brown?
Yes.
Decker?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Barnes?
Barnes is the table, yes.
Mayor Domingo?
Yes, thank you. Okay. Okay. I, request approval, approval of vehicle for hire license, maxi transportation for particular year license from November 17th, 2015 to March 31st of 2016.
So, so moved, support?
Moved and supported, questions?
Is Maxi here?
Yes.
And Mayor and Council, if you recall, at a recent meeting, we, we received direction to redraft our taxi ordinance, and I expect that will be coming very soon. But I don't anticipate that it'll be in place before probably January of next year. And since our current system allows for the renewal to be in March, it seems like it might be sense to, to make sense to allow them at least to have a partial year under our current ordinance, and they have already passed all the inspections, or we're willing to go along with our current requirements. So my recommendation is to approve their request for a taxi ord...
Is this a new?
Yes.
Will they be doing medical, public and private transportation, or is there a specific one?
Um, no, what we'll be doing is...
Your name, your name and address, please.
Hello, councilmembers and citizens of Albion, my name is Emery Bates, and I live at 808 East Broadwell Street here in Albion. But pertaining to your question is, we're going to just service the, you know, public here in Albion area. And we have a few other things that we'd like to add on to help, you know, with the city. I mean, I'm from Albion, been here all my life, and I'm a strong believer of it. So, I've had a few businesses here, and I'm going to try it again, and I think it'll work.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Okay, thank you.
We can call that cell phone number if we need...
Pardon me?
If we need a ride, we can call that some cell phone number?
Yeah, that's the business number, that's...
I'm giving you a chance for free advertising to the people watching on television, so I'm just...
Okay.
So what's the number for people to call?
Oh, the phone number is 517-465-7095. And that's maxi transportation and taxi service.
Is that 24/7?
No, our business hours...
I just thought I'd stop calls.
I'm glad you brought it up. Our business hours are going to be from 5:00 in the morning to 11:00 at night, which is 17 hours. And to run two shifts would be an eight-hour shift with a lunch break, so... That's where we are right now. We're going to just see how it works out, and hopefully that the business, you know, more or less pays for itself, and we can grow.
Okay. And you're running seven days?
Yes, seven days.
All right. Do you have a minimum or a maximum charge?
Uh, yes, I had the, what we have for the Albion area, rates for Albion will be as stated, $5 from point A to point B. That's within the Albion area.
Okay.
And $7 from point A to point B with a maximum wait time of 10 minutes back to point A. We reserve the right to leave after the 10-minute wait time. Customer will know their options on that part.
All right. Are there any further questions?
No, it's wonderful.
But...
Yes, just a minute.
One more thing, we're going to use a perimeter of 30 miles from Albion.
Wow.
So if someone from Albion wants to go out, and that rate is, is rated at a dollar a mile. And if you go to Battle Creek, which would say for instance, 20 miles, and to return to point A, that's at 50 cents a mile.
Our city attorney has his hand down.
I was just going to tell the council that the new taxi ordinance will be coming to council the first meeting this summer.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much.
And thank you, council.
Welcome, good luck with your business.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, awesome, awesome, thank you.
If there's no further questions, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Decker?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Reed? And Mayor Domingo?
Yes, thank you. Request approval of resolution 2015-29, Dog Park Rules.
Mayor and Council, as you are aware, the citizens group have been working on the recreation master plan. And in part of their evaluation of all of our parks, they were looking at the dog park, and also, if you recall, a citizen came forward because her dog had an encounter, an unfriendly encounter with another dog at the park. So it became apparent that we needed some rules relative to our parks. So, working with our staff and the volunteer citizen group, we came up with a recommendation that you have before you, for your consideration. Subsequently, we will also have some signage posted at the dog park. One comment that came in after you received this package was also to include a rule requiring that the fence, the gate be closed at all times. So if, it could be amended to include that language as well.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved and supported, questions? Yes, Becky?
I have a question on the age requirement. If children under the age of 14 are with their parent, is, are they allowed to be present?
With their parent?
Yeah, there was a, there's notes in here about age...
Number five.
Number five, I don't have it written for me, I had a note on it, but number five, that no one under the age of 14 is allowed to go to the park. What if they're with their family?
Trying to recall what the intention was.
But no, 14, it has to be children between the ages of 14. Children under the age of 14 are not permitted at the dog park. Children between the ages of 14 and 17 are permitted, if they're under the supervision, but this says no, no child under 14.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
But no, it's even with parents, it's saying that they're not permitted. The wording of it.
So that does seem to be the language that was recommended? That under the age of 14, they are not permitted even with an adult?
Colin, was that your intent?
I had drafted, these were recommended rules that came from, from elsewhere. I just integrated them into the resolution.
So you're saying if you're 14 or under, you cannot be in the dog park with a dog by yourself, or with a guardian?
That was what was recommended.
So, but then again, I guess if you were there with a guardian, I guess you wouldn't be there with the dog, you'd be there with your guardian, right?
But by, by the rules of this, it is stating, I could not take my grandchild, if I had one, to the park unless it was 14 or older.
So what we're looking for is clarification?
The issue is sentence number three of number five. It says, children under the age of 14 are not permitted in the dog park, period.
Yeah, and that's what I...
Then it says, children between the ages of...
What?
What she, what she's saying is that...
In the dog park, any dog.
Under 14, even if you have your parent, you can't...
That's what it says, is even if you're with your parent, you can't.
You're not allowed in a dog park under 14 years old, is what it's saying.
Right.
Is that the intent?
That was my understanding, so I guess my question is, are you asking for a different age, or that there not be an age at all? I know there's often concern with small children in dog parks regardless of age.
Well, you could have, that children must be, under a certain age, must be under the supervision of their ch, uh, parent, adult, I have no problem with that. But I know a lot of people who use that dog park as small children, they take this, you know, they, they're there as a family, and they're having a great time. I don't think it's fair to eliminate that from their lives when they enjoy taking the dogs to the dog park, and they do it responsibly.
So are you asking to delete the second sentence and change the third sentence to children under the age of 17 are permitted if they're under the supervision of an adult?
Yeah, where, any child under the age of 17 would be under the supervision of an adult would do fine for me.
I think the simplest solution is, obviously, anybody that's 18 or over does not need supervision, so I would, what I would do is eliminate sentence number three completely, and then sentence number four should just read, children under the age of eight, are permitted in the dog park.
Yes.
Um, the last time we mentioned this, we did talk about a safety issue because some of the dogs had got into fights with the supervised adults. I'm not against the children there, but I would like to ask the question of liability, because if the city, you know, maintains dog park...
Number six addresses that?
What's number six?
Use of the dog park is at the owner's own risk.
However, and we've got an attorney here, would that stand up in court and through legal litigation?
Well, I can tell you, anybody can try suing for anything, so I think it affords us a certain amount of protection. But again, you know, anybody can sue us for anything, so...
And that's where we would drop the $10,000 down.
Having this disclaimer on a sign is a large step in the right direction.
Yes, but still, we would have to put the $10,000 up to defend that.
We might, we might not.
All right, well, I'm, I'm all in favor of the kids going in, I just wanted to put that question out there.
Yes, Colin.
Uh, the other thing I wanted to inform the council about, the, the rules come into play pursuant to an ordinance that allows the manager to enact the rules with the approval of the council. The way that the ordinance is structured, a violation of the rules would be deemed a violation of the ordinance, so it would be punishable by 90 days and up to $500 in fines.
So it is enforceable?
A violation of one of these rules would be a violation of the underlying ordinance.
Yes, Becky?
Then that means I have a question about rule number nine. How do they intend, intend to enforce? I agree with it, it'd be great in a perfect world with having all dogs on heartworms, so they don't have external parasites or not risking parvovirus, but how are we going to enforce that?
Scott's going to go and check all the dogs.
Is that the purpose, is that the purpose of a license? Doesn't a license...
No, a license doesn't, all a license doesn't say that they've had a rabies shot, but it does not guarantee anything with contagious diseases or parasites in any way, shape, or form, there's no way to enforce this.
And I guess to answer your question, it's really on the honor system, because we don't have a permitting process relative to the dog parks at the present time.
And I would, and I understand that, except when Colin said that it would actually be a violation of an ordinance, why have something in here that we can't follow through it? Why have the language?
I, I think it's wise just to have it in there, so if it, if, I guess, if it kind of freaks, because I mean, stuff happens. And we've, something happens, and you do find out, it's probably better to have it covered versus not covered, just for our, because, you know, we hate for someone, we find out that some, some, some situation or circumstance happened where we did find out, and then we had no rule to...
Except there's no way, and this, I'm speaking to someone that's in the field, I can tell you, there's absolutely no way that someone can say, I got parvovirus from the park. There's no way they can say, I got worms from the park. There's just no way.
Right, but I could, I could say, I was with my dog in the park, and I saw a dog with mange, or something else, and then, and then...
Well, as far as communicable diseases or even parasites, if you take care of your dog, they can't get these things.
It's not about transmission, it's about observing dogs in the park that would have these diseases, and then being reportable to the, to Scott or to somebody.
It gives us a poker hand, that's what it does.
Pardon me?
Gives us a poker hand, we got something, a way to deal with it.
But, but as far as, what I'm saying is, there's no, I, I do believe, all of these animals should be taken care of, you know that. But I'm telling you that if you as a dog owner take care of your dog, none of this is a risk to your dog. There's no risk.
It's just a poker hand to let the people know that it's a bluff.
No, I just don't see...
We can't enforce it?
Since you work with, with animals, do veterinarians provide people with, like what the doctor says, when your animal has shots?
It's, we provide what's called a health certificate, however, that does, that only does for the basic vaccines. That would not cover whether people are keeping up to date with heartworm preventative, which is a month, once a month medication the dog gets orally, which eliminates any type of parasite. It not only prevents heartworm, it eliminates any type of parasite, so...
Now, you can buy stuff like that at the store, you don't necessarily have to...
Not for heartworm prevention, that has to be purchased from a veterinarian or through a pharmacy.
Okay, well then, could that, could a vet add that on to the certificate you're talking about?
We've talked about that, but we can't, because we can't prove compliance. We have clients that are wonderful, that have good intention, and they come in and they purchase heartworm, they forget to give it. It's just, it's, it is, so we literally cannot put that on a health certificate, we're not allowed to, because we can't prove compliance.
Even if you admit it?
No, the only, at one time ProHeart was allowed in the United States, and it has been against the promise of ProHeart, which was an injection.
I don't see any change in that. How do we protect ourselves?
You're a professional, I don't...
Other than what we've already done. Okay, all right. Any further? See none, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Decker?
No.
Kraus?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Barnes?
Oh.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo?
Yes. Thank you.
And just as a clarification, that was the resolution as amended to include requirement to close the gate and the change relative to the age, being under the age of 18. Have to be accompanied by an adult.
Okay. All right, okay. Request approval of resolution 2015-30, designating the Saw Grant Authorization Representative.
So moved, support.
Moved and supported, are there any questions? Roll call vote, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Kraus?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Decker?
Yes.
Mayor Domingo?
Yes, thank you. L, request approval to authorize the city manager to engage, to engage others on the city behalf regarding the Albion School District.
So moved, so supported, or moved, so moved.
Moved, I didn't hear, moved and supported? Questions? Yes?
Who are the others?
Well, she means, like if they wanted to talk to her from Marshall or Homer or someplace like that, other districts or whatever.
State treasurer?
The reason why, the reason I suggested it is because, I mean, obviously, we can't make all the different meetings, but we do need someone to be engaged on the city's behalf in all of this, because it's going to affect the city, and council needs to be kept abreast, because you know, we are a player, we are in the Albion Public School District, and so I think that it's, it's just wise to be able to make that clear, that we're trying to gather information and communicate with the people, so...
Okay. Yes, Andy?
You're still on the committee, correct?
Correct.
So this is just codifying...
That's all.
What you've been doing.
But I'm acting in my official capacity.
Does that mean you're going to be back on the chairman?
Nice try.
Just checking.
All right.
Thanks, Joe.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Kraus?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Decker?
Yes.
Mayor Domingo?
Yes, thank you. City managers report? Thank you. Bert, you're, oh, I'm sorry.
Just to give you some brief highlights, one, I, I want to applaud Joe Pace, who was recognized this month as our employee of the month. And also, in case you didn't notice, there was some activity on the street in front of the building at 101 North Superior, and that is the retrenching to allow for the sound system, so at our Albion A Glow, there will be music and for the rest of the holiday season. And in case you didn't notice, I believe the Christmas tree is already erected, and it's in front of the, the Mulder statue.
Not the mulder, the molder.
Mulder?
Mulder.
Statue, and there will be the official ceremonial tree lighting, I guess that's on the first as well. And, so that's, there's a lot of things...
And so that's, there's a lot of things going on for the holidays. There's the upcoming Christmas caroling and lots of fun things going on, so that's the short version.
Thank you.
Quick question for the parade, what time are we supposed to meet on the first?
The parade starts at six thirty.
Right.
PM, AM?
They asked for lineup, pardon?
I thought it was AM, PM, they say, okay.
PM.
Right, PM. And it's down at the same location that we do the festival. I think lineup actually starts somewhere around five thirty, but the parade doesn't start till six. There's some things going on prior to six o'clock or something.
Yeah, I thought there was some.
I think the tree lighting is gonna happen before the parade starts, am I correct?
I think the parade starts at six thirty.
Yeah, the ceremonial tree lighting event after the parade.
Okay.
The Albion, former United Way will be having a barbecue, and they were talking about putting, getting the Albion College choir down and a type of pep band.
There's a lot of things going on.
That's what he was gonna do.
Okay, um, uh, okay. Future agenda item?
I have a, just a quick, I guess, I don't know if it'll be an agenda item, but something to think about. Someone in precinct approached me about, I guess, can you speak up? I don't know if mics are not on, I can't hear you. Okay, so we know that the re, the redo of downtown Superior Street is coming up. And, but there's gonna be some detour routes. And I should just say, you know, I was talking to Mr. Passick, and he was asking us to kind of look in to see what, like if they can maybe, I guess, fortify some of the streets because they're gonna be- I think last time he said they're gonna go, they, they had them go up, was it Eaton Street or Clinton? He said something, but-
Right, we widened intersections especially for that.
Yeah, so I, see, he just wanted to put that in our minds and make sure that, isn't the Clinton Street not wide enough? Oh, that turn by the post office is the problem, yeah.
We widened Eaton Street off of Irwin Avenue to make that. But until we get to that point, we won't know. I'm sure it'll be the same detour.
Okay, but I told him I'd, I'd mention it, and, you know, just to keep in mind when we talk to-
Okay, I have a further agenda item. I don't have wow, but I've got an awful lot of complaints that harm mics. They can't hear us or understand us at home. They squeak and squeal and everything else. So I, I can't, if I don't have it, I can't hear it, so.
Right.
I need somebody to look into that or whatever, please. Yes?
I'd like to put on the Albion Housing Commission concerning bus shelters for the kids in the winter, and the city manager is working on some previous requests.
Oh.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry, Colin.
Taxi ordinance.
Okay, all right. If that is all, we will go to, and we don't have anybody absent, so we're good there. We'll go to citizens' comments. Persons addressing the city council shall limit their comments to no more than five minutes. Property decorum is required. Are there any citizens' comments this evening? Please step forward with your name and address, please. Oh, and your comment.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, I'm Robert George, I'm a student at Albion College, I'm a freshman here. I just wanna say to start off that I'm really enjoying my time at the college, and I think it's a great learning experience for everyone involved. But my comment is, recently, there's been leaf burning that's been going on. And I know from talking to several members, several people at Albion, and myself included, that have lung conditions and that really don't like it, that it comes through many of the residential dorms, and the smoke builds up in the residence halls, and people have difficulty breathing sometimes. And a lot of the people that do outdoor activities, such as the runners, the football players, also have to breathe in the smoke. And I was wondering if there is any other alternative location to where the leaves have been burned, that maybe it could be done maybe next year, or if there's still more leaves to be burned this year.
Andy?
So in response to that, the city collects leaves, and they're collecting right now. But in precinct six, which is the south side of campus, we've got one or two residents who are impatient, and I don't know if they, they ask for burn permits or not. And so we have a, we have a ban on burning without a permit, but there's a permitting process that they can do so they can buy a permit to burn. So I share your concern because it was really bad in Ferguson today, where I work. And so I think what we can do is, we can talk to our residents who are burning and ask, is there a real reason for them to burn other than they're impatience with the city and waiting enough time for the city to pick up the leaves? And then we can just ask if they not, given the fact that we have students with allergies and lung conditions, et cetera. So, so I hear you, and I'm working on it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any further comments this evening? Please step forward with your name and address, please.
Hi, my name's Madison Bowen, I'm also a student here at Albion. I actually have a question on something that you had talked about earlier, and it's with the dog park rules because I know, you had said, if I understand correctly, that you, if you're under eighteen, you must be under supervision. But I know that some of the kids at the college are still seventeen, and so that's one of my things 'cause we can't have animals, obviously, in the dorms and stuff, so it's kind of a nice thing to be around animals and stuff like that. So I'm wondering if that's gonna be kind of prohibiting for any of the kids who aren't eighteen yet.
I think, well, no, I think, I think, I think, but the language has said adult, right? So, I mean, what yours, are you, are you assuming, 'cause you can't have, you can't have a dog.
No, we can in the college, but I'm saying for any people who want to be around animals, like if you have it at home, you're obviously gonna miss that atmosphere kind of thing. And it's kind of nice to be in different parks, which obviously, there's a lot in Albion. But I'm just curious for this, what tends to be the plan if you can't be under eighteen without supervision?
So what you're asking is, we change it to seventeen?
Yeah, I'm just kind of wondering if there's a way to make that, 'cause I know that there is, some of my friends who are seventeen, there's kids who are on the younger side in the grades.
But when you go to the dog park, and you don't have an animal.
Correct.
But there's an animal there that the person who owns the animal might allow you to run around with the animal or something like that, is that what you're talking about?
Kind of like that, or even, you know, for me, I like to walk a lot, so it's kind of nice just to be around that atmosphere and just to see the different animals and that kind of thing. Not so much, you know, have to run around with them or pet them or anything, but just to be around it. Like I know there was a dog around campus the other day, and it was just nice to see for a change of pace since we can't have any in the campus.
When I walk my dogs to kids on campus, that's how I socialized all my dogs, the kids are-
That's outside an adult.
But her point is, is they want the contact with the dogs.
Right.
They wanna be able to go in and see the dogs if the people allow, they love it, they miss their pets.
Maybe you could ask the person to thank your mom for me.
Could we change it to seventeen?
Not now.
Not now?
Not that we voted on it, but if it gets changed in there to seventeen, then we all know, I guess it's okay.
I don't anticipate that people are going to be carded at the gate.
Well, I know, I just thought, you know, if that was the thing. I just wanted to kind of like check on that, 'cause I did hear it, so I just wanted to kind of clarify.
Oh, I understand. It'll be taken care of.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Please come forward. Your name and address, please.
Good evening, my name is Evan Reith, I'm a student at Albion College. And I'm also going off of something that was earlier on the agenda. The van that was proposed to purchase for the recreation department, what specifically would that be used for?
Recreation.
So-
Transporting, transporting kids to and from program?
Yeah. Picking kids up.
And I think our senior citizens also use it.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to clarify what that would explicitly be used for. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Are there any further comments? See none? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Thank you all, and thanks again for everyone that came tonight.
Good job, brother.
Yeah, I gotta pee too.